Welcome back, everyone. We'll start the rest of the meeting. We'll wait for the motion. I need a mover and a seconder for the motion rising out of closed session. We're moving it to open session. So a mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Campbell and Councillor Lauer. All those in favor? Thank you. Now, I'll just read the motion that this committee recommends to council that is recommended in confidential report ED 19-13 dated July 5, 2019, from the Economic Development Facilities and Special Products Department regarding the two Hunter Valley Road and Nordea lease, option one be adopted as set out in the report, and that the interior design brief for the property as set out in Schedule A of the report be received as information. Okay, sorry. I have to just back up for one minute here. There are some disclosures of interest, sorry. Seeing none? Okay, we've gone on to the minutes. We've done the closed session. Now, we'll just finish this. And all those in favor? Now, we'll move on to consent agenda. We have an item from the Arilla Police Services Board regarding the Arilla Transit Service or Suspension Lackley Route Subaru Triathlon.
Three, Mr. Chair. At this point in time, I believe only item number three has been pulled by Councillor Lauer.
Need a mover and a seconder for the consent agenda. Moved by Mason, seconded by Pat. Councillor Hean, Councillor Annesworth, that recommended set out in the July 15 consent agenda be adopted by council committee and forward to council for ratification with the exception of item three, which we shall introduce separately. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the next motion, please? By Councillor Spolas, seconded by Councillor Campbell, that this committee recommends to council that report ESO 19-08 dated July 4, 2019, from the Environmental Services and Operations Department regarding strategies to reduce the rate of inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer be received as information. All those in favor?
Three, Mr. Chair.
Sorry. Discussion, sorry. Councillor Lauer?
Thanks for pushing things forward. So I pull this. I'm not, I don't think I'm going to change anything on it, but I just did have some questions. I thought it'd be simpler to do it this way than actually with the first motion. So the first time this was reported that I saw it, and I'm not sure why this was generated. Was this a report that's generated every year? Or is this, was this as a result of inquiry? Because remember, we saw a figure, I think it came through another report, that indicated us it was 49% inflow and inflow and infiltration. And this is saying 40. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. The report, I believe you saw, was the wastewater annual performance report, which is an annual report that's always done. There was some errors in the way that that number was calculated based on, just based on the data that was available at the time. So this is the refined number based on it.
This is a more accurate number.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. So if I could just carry on. So 40% of our capacity is being used for clean water, basically, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's correct.
Yeah, and so what, how close are we? Okay, so we have a facility that can handle a certain amount of water. How much are, how much of that capacity are we using currently?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Our current average daily flows, which is how you measure wastewater treatment plants' capacity, is between, it varies year to year, but it's around 16,000 cubic meters per day. Our allowable limit for average daily flow is 27,000 meters cube per day. So we have a large amount of capacity still on an average daily basis. The other way to look at wastewater capacity is on a peak flow basis. So our peak flow ability is about 72,000 meters cube. So that's during a storm event when we get lots of inflow. And we, I don't know, again, it depends on how strong the storm event is, but we have not bypassed that in the past year, is my, to my knowledge.
We haven't got close. I mean, it's not an issue at this point. I mean, the capacity is not an issue. So we're not, it's not like we're pushed up against the wall trying to solve a problem here.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Roughly about 60% is what we are on an annual for our, for our annual flows.
Just a couple of other quick questions. So we're looking at refitting manholes or putting airtight or watertight manhole covers in. Are we dictating that as a part of new construction when we are doing road, road projects now? Are we insisting on some sort of accommodation there?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do not currently have any sort of a program for new installations. This is something we would review and look at adding to the design criteria manual, but there are negative externalities in terms of adding, making them all watertight. They would also be gas tight, which would mean that you're now not allowing those to vent, passively vent, so you can get a buildup of explosive gases. And there's, there's other small challenges like that. So we wouldn't want to do it for every single manhole, in my estimation, because that would, that would just cause a bunch of different problems.
Another problem. Okay, last question, just regarding the voluntary, what we're calling the voluntary, the voluntary EnviroSave. So when we call it voluntary, somebody's got to catch it, right? Or somebody's got to view it as a potential problem. As you've mentioned in your report, the purchaser, purchaser's lawyer's got to twig to it. It used to be that it was mandatory, I believe, and every real estate deal had to sort of have that, that inspection done, right? Have we decided that that wasn't producing the results we wanted, the mandatory?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I believe initially it was a mandatory, mandatory program, but we found that there was not, and this was years ago, and before my time, and there was not the requirement there when, when they were actually doing mandatory, we were not finding anything. So we found that we were actually imposing extras on, on house sales that we didn't need to. I believe now we're doing roughly about 70, 70 to 80 on an annual basis, and we're finding virtually nothing. But it would be, it may well be something that we would want to look at for the future.
But currently, it's not producing the results. Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Spolas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The third paragraph down says, per the United States Environmental Protection, private laterals are estimated to contribute above 40%. Can you give me an explanation on that, please? Because I find even the next paragraph that's really hard to understand in extraneous flows and all that. So the private sector part of it, how's that contribute to it?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the private side, the, the city-owned infrastructure ends at the property line. So all that statement is saying is that according to the United States EPA, that 40% of the inflow and infiltration actually occurs beyond the property line on private property. So at the homeowners' section. That's the sort of thing that the EnviroSave program was intended to try and mitigate, that's eave troughs connected into the sanitary, or weepers, or sump pumps, things like that. Also, if people don't, we maintain the city infrastructure, but if they have cracks or breaks or, or inflow points on their property, then that's, that can be a significant source of inflow.
Supplementary, we don't allow the private sector to connect to our, to our sanitaries for...
Through you, Mr. Chair. When I say private, I mean like homeowners, residential and everything. We do allow the private sector to connect to our, our sewer mains, but they go to the property line, and then we bring it into the sewer.
So their flow from roof water or rainwater and everything else that goes into their, their eave troughs and into, some of them have it, but our sump pumps do, cannot be connected to the sewer line?
You will find sump pumps connected to sewer lines. That is, it's not allowed. It's not a legal connection. Sorry, I apologize if I misinterpreted. It's not legal by Ontario Building Code, but they, people, contractors or people who have wet basements will find a way to connect it in.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of council? I had a question from the chair. If you do have a situation for an EnviroSave when there is a real estate transaction and you do find a sump pump connected into the sanitary sewer, does that propose a fine? Or does that stop the transaction? Or how does that have been taken care of in the past?
Through you, Mr. Chair. What you'll find is that it's very hard to enforce any sort of changes on private property. The only thing that we would have, in my estimation, is that you would report this to the purchaser, and they would request that it be repaired and inspected prior to buying the house. But it has to be at their, at their own discretion.
Okay. And then supplement to that, what if there was a breakage where there was significant water damage and it was found that? Would the city be liable for anything like that where we, we weren't contacted for that connection?
I'm not sure 100% understand. I believe you're asking that if we weren't contacted for EnviroSave and then there was damage resulting from something EnviroSave inspection would have caught. I don't believe we'd have any liability in that, but I'm, I'm not legal counsel.
Wait and see, right. Councillor Hean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we no longer have that program that a number of years ago was targeted at catching mayors who were connected to the sanitary sewer system and where the chief administrative officer pointed out to the mayor that that was illegal and the mayor had to change that within 48 hours? That program no longer exists?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That predates my history at Arilla, so I can't comment on that.
Keep that in your diary. No more questions. I'll reread the motion. I have a motion moved by Councillor Spolas, seconded by Councillor Campbell, that this committee recommends to council that report ESO 19-08 dated July 4, 2019, from Environmental Services and Operations Department regarding strategies to reduce the rate of inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer be received as information. All those in favor? I'll read the next motion under board reports. I need a mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Spolas, Councillor Campbell, that this committee recommends to council that is recommended in report EAC 19-01 dated June 30, 2019, from the Environmental Advisory Committee, provisions to the Sesquicentennial Tree Projects to authorize Environmental Advisory Committee to host a 2019 planted tree program in place of the tree rebate portion of the project be approved, and that the Environmental Advisory Committee be authorized to commence work on building a draft program for a community tree planting program and report back to council committee early in 2020. Any questions?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If I may, I believe that we have the presenters here, and they might want to do just a bit of an introduction to the overall report.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Williams and Mr. Hunt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of council, for allowing us to attend before you here today. I have with me Tyler Hunt. If anyone doesn't know Tyler, Tyler's been instrumental in a lot of the work that we've been doing around the tree program and the program specifically mentioned in here, the tree bait program and what we want to try and change it into for the future. So I think that perhaps many of you will remember, we did the Sesquicentennial Tree Project tree planting with the majestic maples in each of the parks and the four wards, and the boulders are there with the plaques, and we tend to get comments from time to time that people like that, so that's, that's good. We've got one in reserve for our special site, which is West Street when it's ready. The boulder's inscribed and set, ready to go, so we're on track with that. We did an honor roll of trees. A previous member, Jeff Cole, he worked with Bob Bowles, and interviewed some of us. I personally did a couple of interviews and videos, and they're on the city's website. And you can take a look at them, and we're hopeful that as other members of EAC identify trees that are special to them, or members in the community do, that we can continue with that program. The one specifically that we would share with you, and it's in your information package, is the tree bait program. And Tyler, Tyler worked very hard on this, but we didn't get the uptake with that program that we, we thought we would. So we're here before you today to say we'd like to take the funds that are remaining to that and shift it into a newly designed program for later this fall. And if there's any questions about that, Tyler will be happy to talk to you about that. And then when we finish with the reallocation of money, I'd like, Mr. Chair, to just take a minute to talk to you about our plans for 2020 for a new tree plant program for the city. Thank you.
Any questions from members of council? Councillor Spolas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to our guests. Have you looked at Scouse Valley? And I know it's not within the city's jurisdiction, it's the Conservation Authority there. There's a lot of trees that are falling, including the birch tree that are in desperate need of help. So have you looked at that at all in replanting some of the trees so that we can have better growth in there?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have a member who is quite active. You might know him, Bob Bowles. There is a management plan for Scound Valley, and Mr. Bowles often leads groups out there and keeps on top of much of the proposals that we have in the management plan for Scound Valley. We've tended to just look to the management plan as direction on how the future of that property should be managed, but I'd be, I'd be quite pleased to suggest to committee members that we can also take a look at whether there could be a tree planting component in there if needed.
Mr. Merkley?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up, certainly the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department operates to maintain Scound Valley, and we work with the Conservancy to ensure any new activities or tree plantings and that are done in accordance with the plan.
Okay. Councillor Falls?
Thanks. Through the chair. I was curious if there were any particular locations on your radar at this point in terms of good locations for tree planting within the city? And also if there's some consideration around reaching out to residents and planting on private property as well? Thanks, guys.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely. I'm going to ask Tyler to speak to the ideas that we have on that. One of the things that I think has come up before and is particularly appropriate for us to consider down the road, we've been working with the director, who's the sponsor of EAC, and the director's staff, and we've talked initially about perhaps doing a project along Ben's Ditch out from the new rec center down the road. So that's, that's one area where we think there's a lot of potential down the road, and we're going to work with Mr. Shell and staff on that one. Tyler also has a number of others that I'd like him to share with you.
So through you, Mr. Chair. Some of the early days of this program, we, we use some very handy but free available software, and we did a bit of a mapping of the city of Arilla, and there are certainly parts of the city that are tree deserts where usually where more older development is, the end of West Street near Volkswagen, and that section comes to mind. But another area is pockets of residential development. And we've, we've learned over time that there are some barriers for residents, maybe an information barrier, they just, it can be, it can be a bit of a barrier to go out and buy a tree. What species do you buy? How do I plant it? Where do I plant it? And we hope that through some of this program, and we can reduce those barriers and make it, make it a no-brainer for them to, to take on a tree and plant it in their property.
Go ahead, Jay, and then Councillor Hean.
Sorry, a quick supplemental. Just kind of thinking off the cuff here. I know the willow tree is especially easy to kind of reproduce. Is that a tree that could be considered as one possible option if it, if it's usually a waterfront property, I would assume?
Through you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that we're looking at is where we would go and propose to do a new tree planting program that I'll speak to in a moment. And shorelines and restoration of shorelines and naturalization of shorelines is very important along the Twin Lakes. The Conservation Authority on Lake Simcoe has a program, and we think that we can model some of it. And willow, red osier, dogwood, some of the other species where the roots are water-loving and they hold banks and that is something that we would consider.
Okay. Councillor Hean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that our provincial government did cancel a tree planting program, and perhaps it's up to local communities to try and pick up that slack. And I, my thought was, actually was given to me by a friend of mine, that perhaps we could challenge other communities and say, we have 31,000 people in our community, how many trees can we actually plant here? And perhaps challenge our neighboring communities to see if they can match that, that number. There, you mentioned, you mentioned Ben's Ditch and other areas where we need trees and see how many trees we can, we can actually plant. There are a number of former tree planters that, that live in our community that had that as summer jobs, and that might be something that they might be willing to take on as a, as a volunteer thing. They certainly are much better at planting trees than, than I would be. That, that could be, we could put out the call to say, is this something you might be willing to get involved in? And let's see how many people we could bring on board to help do that and, and perhaps, you know, spur that kind of activity and see what we could do in that type of, of a volunteer activity.
If I may, through you, Mr. Chair. That's an excellent segue into how we want to do a little bit of a realignment on the tree bait program that didn't quite get the uptake. And we want to try and, and bring things out to the public so they can see the good benefits of tree planting. So what we're proposing, what's in the package, is just to reallocate some of the funds to a residential tree giveaway this fall and a school program. And we think by doing both of those, Tyler's done a lot of background work, he's looked at other cities that have, have done this type of program, we think it's really going to raise awareness on the value of tree planting. And we're proposing that for fall of this year. And then what we'd like to do next year is the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. So for 2020, we have a couple of our members who are looking at a, a new tree planting program, and that's the future part of the package, and we're hoping to gain corporate sponsorships to do that type of tree planting program. And we could, through you, Mr. Chair, to Councillor Hean, we, we could look at who would be involved, where we would go, how we would use volunteers to do that sort of thing. We've already started to think a little bit about what that program should look like. As I said, we'd like to do it with corporate and community sponsorship. It may well be that, perhaps you'll see us back here for a little bit of seed money on it, but we, we think we can manage that, and we'd like to seek permission from council to prepare a proposal for council's consideration in 2020 with a new tree plant program. So we would come back to you early in the new year when we've got that lined up, after we have the experience of the fall program.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of council? Councillor Spolas?
Thank you. We have one of our suppliers, and I don't want to bring business into this, but we have one of our suppliers that we buy our, some of our shirts with, that has a program that they, you buy the shirt, and for every dollar, they plant 10 trees or something like that. So I'll forward that to you if you like. So they have a program where they might donate some money towards it as well. But my real question is, have you ever flown over the city of Arilla in an airplane and looked at the tree canopy that's on there? It is fantastic. It is one of the best, flown a lot in my lifetime, and it's one of the best tree canopies I've ever seen. You don't see a lot of houses, actually. So I'm just wondering if we could do a drone concept of, and how some of the, some of the areas that need trees, obviously, and that. So if we did a drone flyover, would that help promote the tree planting issue that we have within our city?
Through you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that we did as a committee last year was take a look, there's programs that you can use, and, and look at Google Earth and look at other types of information, and you can actually calculate the extent of hard surfaces, the extent of soft surfaces, the extent of tree cover. We did that, just off the top of my head, I don't have the exact figure, but it was around 30, 32% I think was tree cover in the city. And generally, it's suggested, depending on what you read, that an ideal number, if you can push that up to 40, that's just stellar for, for a municipality. So we keep that in the back of our mind, and, and we're looking at that work that was done by some of our members to see if we can use that as our base to improve tree cover in the city. And at some point in time in the future, I think that you'll see us come, come back here with staff with some ideas about how we can preserve and protect trees as well as plant new trees. We, EAC doesn't have a drone, but if you want to give us some money to get one, I guess we could do the drone, Mr. Chair.
That's what I was hoping we'd, you'd ask for in our budget, so budget deliberations.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Williams. Okay, I'll read, does anyone want the motion rewritten? Not? All those in favor? That's Carrie. We'll now move on to council referrals, and Mr. Crawford? Mr. Suggnan, sorry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of council. As set out in the report, there are three options. Option one being to receive the report as information at this time. Option two, direct staff to repair amendments to the official plan and zoning bylaw for council's consideration, to restrict where short-term property rentals would be permitted in the city, and establish potentially other zoning restrictions, such as requiring site plan control. So that's option two. Option three would be to prepare amendments to the official plan and zoning bylaw, as well as direct staff to prepare a licensing bylaw, a bylaw to license all short-term property rentals in the city. As noted in the report, staff is recommending at this time that the report be received as information, and there are a variety of reasons that staff is recommending it. To begin with, what staff has found out in speaking with the OPP, as well as speaking directly with city's bylaw enforcement staff, is that really, we're not hearing a lot of issues associated with short-term property rentals in the city. In fact, they're, they're few and far between. In making this recommendation, staff is also mindful that there are a number of existing tools in the toolbox to address issues associated with short-term rentals. So if there are noise issues, well, we have a noise bylaw that's in effect, and the police are, will enforce that bylaw after hours. In addition to that, we have an open-air burning bylaw. Sometimes there can be burning issues associated with short-term property rentals, and so we do have a bylaw in place, and it is enforced as well. As mentioned in the report, there are a small number of municipalities that have experienced significant issues in their municipalities with short-term property rentals, and as a result of that, they've gone so far as to implement, rather, comprehensive zoning and licensing restrictions. What we're finding, as I mentioned at the onset, we're not hearing those issues here in the city, and as a result, at this time, we believe the report should be received as information. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Falls?
I probably will, through the chair, I'll probably seek clarity through the clerks' department. There was one motion that I was going to put forward. Would it be appropriate to do that now? Okay, sure. So I had, I had put this forward, and it's, basically what it's proposing is that staff do a report looking at the feasibility long-term of implementing just a licensing system in place. So it, it's essentially an option four. It's, it's different from all three of them. The reason I thought I'd bring this up, just because, and I've talked with staff about this a little bit already, certainly in Arilla right now, we're not facing some of the problems that are faced elsewhere in other municipalities, and I, you know, we're not all of a sudden going to experience... And, you know, we're not all of a sudden going to experience extreme issues with this. My logic in, at least putting this on the discussion table would be, you know, we see in larger centers like Montreal, Vancouver, Toronto, that these types of accommodations are compromising the number of rental units and affordable rental units in central cities. And additionally, we can also, you know, if we address the issue now, it's not an issue that we're addressing 10 years down the road when it is more of a significant issue. So I thought I'd at least put this on the table to see if fellow council members would be interested in supporting it. Thanks.
Do you have a second, or Counsel Spola? Any more discussion? I'll wait for the motion.
Thanks, through the chair. I do want to emphasize too that I've used, or we've changed the phrasing for long-term feasibility. So, you know, we're not putting an exact date on this, but just kind of looking at, you know, how might we implement something like this in the long term? Thanks.
Counsel Spola?
Thank you, sir. Through you to our staff. Oro has had some serious problems and, you know, not that I have anything to do with Oro, but they called me and seen what our situation was here in Avrilia and I couldn't tell them anything. But I think it's coming. So it's one of the reasons why I'm seconding the motion. I don't think we need to do it right away, but I think it's coming where we are going to have a problem. My other serious concern is the fire department and how safe are these one-time or short-term rentals? Are they fireproofed? Is there access direction in case of a fire? Some of them are in the basement and that kind of stuff. So I think it's, to me, it's a safety issue as much as it is a noise or any of that, the issue. So that's one of the reasons I second this. But I think it's really important that we do license them. And we know where these units are and we know, make sure that the fire department is there to look at them and make sure that they're safe to inhabit and protect the people that are renting them or using them as a one-time shot. So I will be supporting this motion.
Okay, I'll read the motion. Moved by Counsel Fallas, seconded by Counsel Spola. That this committee recommends to council that further to report CD-19-11 dated July 10, 2019 from the Clerks and Development Services and Engineering Department, staff be directed to prepare a report for council's consideration regarding long-term feasibility of requiring short-term property rentals to be licensed by the city. All those in favor? Oh, sorry?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may. If I could just ask Mr. Crawford to comment on the issue of whether there would be legal advice required as part of this overall report in terms of the legality of the licensing provision? And if so, then we would need to add that to the motion that you have before you.
Okay, Mr. Crawford and then Counsel Rehman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so as I mentioned in the report, if council wants to go down the path of implement a licensing regime, there's some costs, as the CAO has indicated, with respect to legal fees. We'd want to get legal counsel involved in reviewing any bylaw that council was considering. And the reason being is that what we found in the jurisdictions that have implemented these types of restrictions is they are being challenged on the provisions. So we'd want to, you know, cross the Ts and dot the Is. So there would be legal fees to review the draft bylaw. In addition to that, there would have to be consideration given to whether or not we would want to get onboard with a company that actually monitors short-term rentals. As I mentioned in the report, when we discussed this idea with the ONE company, they actually search over 60 websites that exist. So there would be potentially, well, as I mentioned in the report, up to $3,000 annually for that. In addition to that, what staff believes is we need to hire at least a part-time person to assist in administering and enforcing the licensing bylaw. We could look to have the license fees offset the cost to administer and enforce. So that would be something that would be discussed in greater detail if a subsequent report is requested by council. So these are, you know, some of the things that need to be looked at a little bit more closely when staff comes back with a second report on the licensing aspect.
Counsel Rehman?
Mr. Chairman, when I read the report, I got the sense that at the moment, this isn't a major issue in our community. And I also got the sense from the report that staff time is being used in a variety of ways, and this might not be the most productive way to use staff time in the near term. I understand my colleagues wanting to put long-term in here, but if we ask for a report, we're asking for staff to do something. We're not asking for staff to do something in five years, we're asking them to do it now, even though the implementation of this may not be for five years. I'm also not a strong advocate for regulation if we don't need regulation. I'd rather we put regulation in place where there is an issue that needs to be regulated. I don't see it, I don't understand it at this point in time in our community. Of other communities are having the problem and it begins to migrate here and staff report on that a year from now, two years from now. As the motion says, within this term of council, we can bring this item back without reconsideration to begin the process that Counsel Fallas is suggesting. So my view at this point in time is this motion is premature and that we should allow this to go forward and keep an eye on it, as I'm sure Mr. Crawford will be doing on our behalf and report back when it is something that does require us to regulate.
Thank you. Counsel Rehman and Counsel Lauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the election, I bumped into two short-term rentals while I was door-knocking. And they were both very nice homes that people were using as a holiday home and not apartments, as Counsel Fallas indicated. Because when people are coming up to, or Counsel Spola indicated, because people are coming up here as a holiday, they're not looking at an apartment use, they're looking at a holiday use. So I don't think it's going to affect our apartment usage. It's more likely to be a house that they're looking at. So I would agree with Counsel Rehman. I don't think it's a problem at the present time. Maybe you're too old, it may become something you want to look at, but I don't think it's something we need to be looking at at the present time.
Thank you. Counsel Lauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question to Mr. Crawford. If we identified this as a problem on January 1 of this year, how long would it take to implement a licensing system?
Through, Mr. Chair, so there's no statutory public meetings or anything of that nature to implement a licensing regime? So it'd just be a matter of giving staff enough time to prepare the bylaw, get legal advice on it, and then bring it back before council? So I would think it would take, you know, we could bring it back within, you know, probably two to three months from the time that council asked for a report. We could try to get it back sooner than that, but I'm just being realistic, thinking about, you know, legal council schedule, you know, et cetera. And I know that the town of Blue Mountains, who has kind of been an evolving process, are, I believe, looking at changes to the bylaw and planning changes in the fall of this year. So if council were to direct staff to, you know, to pursue this bylaw, we'd be looking closely at what the town of Blue Mountains has implemented.
Okay, thank you. And if I could, I just could, I actually have a note to myself along the same lines as Counselor Fallas about being caught off guard. But I think if we can react in three months, I think we can afford to allow it to, the problem to manifest itself and still respond in a quick enough way that we don't need to start, I think, now. So I won't be supporting.
Counsel Sugden and Counsel Campbell?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. In addition to the response Mr. Crawford gave to the last question, I would note that in the report, you'll see that as we did our benchmarking in other municipalities, there's various interpretations of how their zoning bylaws apply and how they do not apply to short-term rentals. In the Toronto case, City of Toronto went to the effort of passing a zoning bylaw amendment to specifically permit short-term rentals in the city. And that's been appealed to the local Planning Appeals Tribunal. So the city has taken, that city has taken a position that they are not permitted unless expressly permitted in a zoning bylaw. In our case, that's our interpretation, that if you rent your home, whether it be for a day or a month or a year, it's, you're renting a home and that's not the same as a commercial enterprise. So I think, to Counsel Lauer's question, how quickly could we react? When the Toronto case finally is dealt with at the LPAT, we may have a better understanding of how the board or how the tribunal views the zoning bylaw. And we may also be informed then that whether we need to do a zoning amendment here or not in conjunction with the licensing. So I just use that as a caution, that that case is still pending. We don't know the outcome of it at this point. And if it determines that that's the actual best practice, then we would, we may need to initiate a zoning amendment as well with that. So that may add to the length of time it would take to react.
Counsel Campbell?
Thank you, Counsel Clustra, through you. I agree with my colleagues. I don't think we have an issue here that we need to deal with at this time. If it becomes an issue, then certainly we'll have a look at it. And I also think giving it some time will have those other municipalities that we just mentioned, we'll be able to see the outcomes there and that could inform us as well. The one thing I do want to ask, through you to Mr. Crawford, is, one thing I think is that there should be an even playing field here and we're introducing the 4% MAT fee. So if that's going to be applied to hotel rooms, I think that should be applied to short-term rentals as well. Is it possible to do that without a licensing structure?
Mr. Crawford?
Through, Mr. Chair, I'm not the expert on the MAT piece, but I know that, for example, the city of Barrie, they don't license short-term rentals, but they still collect the MAT. So I think the answer is yes, I think you still can, even without implementing licensing restrictions.
Thank you.
I'll just get some clarity from Ms. Ruff.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, Mr. Crawford is correct in that the city of Barrie has signed an agreement with Airbnb that collects the 4% MAT tax on the city's behalf. Sure, Airbnb isn't the full short-term rental industry, but it does represent about 75% of all short-term rentals, so it is possible.
Thank you. Counsel Fallas?
Thanks. I just wanted to add a little context. Certainly, I can understand fellow councillors' desire to wait, to wait until the problem becomes a larger deal. The other thing I wanted to add as well, just on the point of, well, I certainly, my intention of introducing this was to more restrict properties from renting on a regular basis. Of course, you know, there might be ways of getting around, you know, if someone infrequently, you know, goes on vacation and wants to rent out for a week or something like that, that might not be the end of the world. But yeah, just kind of finding that balance might be something that would have to be found. And I certainly recognize it's not a black and white type of solution. But yeah, I just wanted to add that for context. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else like the motion re-read? Okay, all those in favor? Say that again, please. And it's lost. I'll read the original motion. Need a mover and a seconder, please. Counsel Campbell, Counsel Rehman. That this committee recommends to council that report CD-19-11 dated July 10, 2019 from the Clerks Department and Development Services and Engineering Departments regarding an overview of regulations and options for short-term property rentals be received as information at this time. All those in favor? Any more discussion, sorry? Any more discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor? That's carried. Have Development Service and Engineering regarding apartment clerk always stop in Peter Street and Tecumseh Streets. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, fellow staff, and honored guests. Report DSC 1922 responds to the request to investigate the possibility of an always-stop at Peter Street North and Tecumseh Street, as well as analyze the effectiveness of the always-stop at Peter Street North and Neowash Street. So staff prepared this report using industry guidelines such as the Ontario traffic manuals as well as field conditions, including turning movement counts and the collision histories. The Ontario traffic manuals identifies three main criteria for the warrant of an always-stop: traffic volume, traffic volume split, and collision history. The traffic volume needs to exceed 350 vehicles in the peak hour. And the traffic volume split, they're basically for an always-stop, we're looking at the roads to be roughly equal with a maximum split of 65% cars in one direction, 35 in the other. And for collision history, there needs to be a minimum of four angle-type collisions per year over a three-year history. So that would exclude rear-end collisions. And based on the criteria from the Ontario traffic manuals, Peter Street North and Tecumseh Street do not warrant an always-stop. Similarly, based on this criteria, the always-stop in Peter Street North and Neowash Street is unwarranted based on current conditions. Having an unwarranted stop sign can lead to unwanted effects, such as people running the stop sign because they've ignored it, which in turn can lead to decreased pedestrian and bicycle safety as there's a false sense of security in the stop sign at the location. The Ontario traffic manual is a guideline and it is intended to promote uniformity in the design process of roadways across Ontario. But engineering and judgment needs to be used all the time when considering the manual. And that was done during this analysis. So based on this information, and the information is set before you in report DSC 1922, an always-stop is not recommended at Peter Street North and Tecumseh Street. And it is recommended that the stop signs on Peter Street North at the intersection of Neowash and Peter Street North be removed. Thank you.
Can I have a mover and a seconder for the motion, please? Counsel Rehman and Counsel Rehman. That this committee recommends to council that report DSC 1922 dated July 18 from the Development Services and Engineering Department regarding the feasibility of installing an always-stop at Peter Street and Tecumseh Street be received and that the stop signs on Peter Street North at the intersection of Peter Street North and Neowash Street be removed. Discussion? Counsel Rehman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you very much for the report. As you know, I originally brought it up because a number of constituents had asked me about this particular corner. And on my way home, I did actually witness an accident at that corner. So it made sense for me to bring it forward. And, you know, four accidents in a year does seem like a relatively high threshold, but I can't argue with the actual stats that you have to work with. So I'm quite willing to go with it. And I was actually quite surprised when you said that it wasn't meeting the threshold at Neowash Street. But I also do know that the stoplight at Neowash Street has always seemed a very unnatural stoplight. And I know it took me a while to get used to it, otherwise one that I could use probably several times a day. And the one comment that I did get when I was talking to somebody yesterday about removing it was that they were concerned that the traffic might sort of ramp up going up and down Peter Street if we took away that stoplight. And I was, would be interested in your comments to that effect.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, it is impossible to predict the future, so there definitely could be an increase because there's one more traffic control device that has been removed. The intent of an always-stop is not to control traffic in the sense of traffic calming. It is there for safety with intersections that warrant it. So from a calming perspective, if that was a concern, then this wouldn't be the proper tool to use to address a traffic calming issue. In terms of volume increase, there potentially could be. We have seen over the past number of years, the volume has decreased. Now, if that's because of the stop sign, that, again, there's speculation that could go either way, or if it's just there's in development in different areas and traffic is having different patterns.
Counsel Lauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I totally disagree with the notion that parking signs don't calm. So I totally disagree with the notion that parking signs don't calm traffic. I understand what they're technically there for, and I find it hard in this case. I would urge my counselor, my fellow counselors, not to support this this particular option and to support option two, which would see no stop signs installed at Tecumseh and Peter because the engineering is right, but leave them alone at Neowash and Peter because the engineering is wrong. So I realize I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth here, but I use that intersection every day, at least once every day. The reason why there is a traffic difference there is because ODCBI is now closed down. So that would reduce the numbers down Peter Street. But there are two churches there, and what is happening now is there is a stop sign. So you slow down in front of St. Andrews to come into that intersection, and then you sort of orientate yourself and you're looking ahead at the United Church, which is a very busy church, and there's parking on both sides, and there's a lot of people crossing, and there's all kinds of things going on there. But, you know, because you've stopped and now you're looking forward to that rut light, you approach that very cautiously. If you're going to wind up on Brant Street and head down that hill and be going 50 or 60 kilometers an hour, it's going to give a completely different feel to that. So I would urge my fellow counselors to defeat this, and I would put forward option two after that.
Counselor Fallas?
Thanks. Counselor Lauer took the through the chair, Counselor Lauer took the words right out of my mouth, and certainly I see eye to eye on him on that and would be willing to second that option.
Okay, I'll read the original motion. Over to Counselor Eamon, second by Counselor Heen. "That this committee recommends to counsel that report DSC 19-22 dated July 8, 2018 from the Development Services and Engineering Department regarding the feasibility of installing an always stop at Peter Street and Tecumseh Street be received, and that the stop signs on Peter Street North at the intersection of Peter Street North and Neowash Street be removed." Any more discussion? Are all those in favor? Any more discussion? Counselor Sepola? Okay, call the question.
Mr. Chair, if I could just provide some clarification. So the this motion that is before you on your screens is currently on the floor. And so the Counselor, Counselor Lauer and Counselor Fallas have proposed an alternative motion. So this motion would first need to be defeated before any subsequent motion is then introduced.
Okay. All those in favor? Have a mover and a seconder for the proposed motion. Counselor Fallas, Counselor Lauer. "If this committee recommends to counsel that report DSC 1922 dated July 8, 2019 from the Development Services and Engineering Department regarding the feasibility of installing an always stop at Peter Street and Tecumseh Street, as well as an analysis of the always stop located at Peter Street and Neowash Street be received as information." Okay, all those in favor? That's carried. The next item, refund raising campaign for installation of solar panels at the Aralia Recreation Centre. And Mr. Kupital will lead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Following a deputation in April by a group of citizens called Aralia Community Energy, council asked staff to repair a report on the feasibility of installing solar panels at the Recreation Centre. The Recreation Centre has been designed to accommodate a future solar panel project on its roof. The Aralia Community Energy Group is asking council to move forward with a solar panel project at the Recreation Centre. The capital cost of the project is valued at $300,000. The group wishes to raise 2/3 of the costs from the public and private sectors. The remainder of the project will be paid by the city, approximately $30,000 per year over three years. The ongoing operational cost, which is about the same as a reduced energy bill the city would receive from this project, is also to be paid by the city. Staff did consult with Aralia Power Distribution Corporation on the project. In addition to confirming power and in cost estimates, they indicated there are no project rebate programs available currently and that offer a financial return over the project's lifecycle. Staff are recommending that council receive this report as information and that staff will monitor future funding programs and will notify council if and when they are available. Thank you.
Any questions? Counselor Heen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Kupital. If funding should become available in the future, is this something that could be added two years, three years, four years down the road?
Through you, Ms. Chair. Yes, that is correct. The design can be done two years, four years, 10 years down the road. It is designed to support a structure of solar panels in the future.
Wrong way. So in other words, if provincial or federal grants became available that would make it feasible, then we could go forward with it in the future then?
Through you, Ms. Chair. That is correct.
Counselor Ainsworth?
Yes, through Mr. Chair, just to get things moving, but I'd be happy to move the motion that has been brought forward before us, which is to receive as information.
Counselor Lauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not, will I rather not support this just as information. I think some folks have made a pretty good effort here, and I would like to see us try to push this forward. I am not in favor of the long-range plan of committing the $30,000 that we make every year on the existing solar plan, or sort of solar panels. But I am interested in the idea of providing seed for this community fundraising effort. Now, I realize that some of the numbers aren't making a lot of sense in terms of return, but at the same time, I believe their intention was more, was not, I won't say it was more, but that they certainly wanted to educate the public on how this this kind of conservation works. They wanted to put an installation in the actual facility that would reflect what was going on on the roof, and then hopefully people standing around would actually pay attention to the kilowatts being produced, et cetera, et cetera. And it would be an educational process. The actual operating, if we got it up and running, seems to be a wash. We're not going to make any money. It's 18,000 in, 18,000 out. So I don't think that's an issue, but I hate to just let this die at this point. So I'm I am in favor of defeating this particular motion, or I guess it's defeat it as opposed to amending it, and then coming back with some sort of partial solution to this problem.
Counsel Freeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be supporting the motion as it is in front of the table. I'd be happy to second it if we're still looking for someone to play that role. The Mayor's Task Force on Sustainability has been active in our community and pulling together a group of very concerned citizens about the long-term sustainability of our city. A lot of it's been focused on the climate change and the carbon dioxide issues, and obviously, solar panels are one mechanism by which that can happen. But they also have identified 35 other items that they are interested in pursuing. And at this point in time, they have not put those into priority order. They have not yet had an opportunity to report to council. And I expect almost all of them, those, not all, but almost all of them, will require some investment on the part of somebody to get it going. And every time I talk to them, the somebody they look at is and say, well, that's got to be the city to take the initiative here. So my view is that why let this one jump the queue? It's a possibility at any time in the future that this may be a project that makes sense for us, but there may be others. At the same time, I believe our environmental services people are preparing a sustainability program for our city, and that's the response, that will be the responsibility of our council to figure out, how do we implement that program? And it may be that the $30,000 a year that this program is requiring could be much, much more beneficial to the future of our community and to those buildings and activities that we're involved in by holding that money in reserve for that potential rather than committing it at this point. So I just think it's premature. With as many different initiatives going forward, we need to consider them in a more balanced fashion. Thank you.
Counsel Fallas, then Counselor Sepola.
Thanks. I just wanted to say I concur with Counselor Lauer, and so I'll be voting against this this motion.
Counselor Sepola?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our staff. How quickly can we bring this back if the province all of a sudden goes back to what they did in the past?
Mr. Kupital?
With with grants and that kind of stuff?
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Chair. This group have done a considerable amount of work, and it's good work. And if a grant program did become available tomorrow, this is something that we would look at immediately and bring forward. So though any if a program does come available, does make sense financially over the long term, then this is a type of project that would work. So that's the answer is very quickly.
Counselor Lauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to speak to the potential of fit programs reappearing, that's not going to happen, in my opinion. I mean, I think the numbers have come to the point where it almost makes sense to do solar panels, solar projects without government subsidy. So I can't see anything substantial coming back in the next next little while. So I wouldn't hinge your decision on the possibility of those grants reappearing.
Any more discussion? I'll reread the motion. A motion moved by Counselor Ainsworth, second by Counselor Eamon, that this committee recommends to counsel that report FM 2019-01 dated July 11, 2019, from the Facilities and Special Projects Department regarding the feasibility of installing solar panels at the Aralia Recreation Centre be received as information. All those in favor?
Carried.
Now, a report from Treasury Department regarding the 2018 financial statements. Welcome, Giselle Bodkins from BDO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. The annual audited financial statements summarize the financial information for the year ended December 31, 2018. The statements are combined, and they incorporate information from the operating budget, capital budget, reserves, boards, and agencies. There are three attachments to the report. Schedule A and B of the report are the communication of audit results from our auditors, BDO. Schedule C of the financial statements is prepared by city staff and audited by BDO. The financial statements represent the city's financial performance and financial position and how it has changed over time. I have here with me Giselle Bodkins, partner at BDO, and she will communicate the audit results. Good afternoon, everyone. Through you, Mr. Chair. We concluded our audit. There were no issues, no material differences in the financial statements. Your financial statements have a clean audit opinion. The only difference between this year and last year is last year's audit report was one page and now it's two pages, just to explain what the responsibility of staff and management is and the responsibility of the auditors. And I'm not sure if it's Appendix A or B, but we have a letter final report to mayor and council, which you can read at your leisure. Just wanted to bring your attention to page nine, which is everything we have to communicate to you. And you'll see in page nine that we had no issues with carrying on our audit. We wanted to thank Jazz and Jim and their staff for full cooperation. Thank you.
I always ask these questions with a little bit of fear because I always sense that it could be obvious answers here that I'm missing. But on page five, we're talking about the consolidated statements of changes in net financial assets. And it appears that in our budget, we were anticipating a net financial asset at the end of the year of 55 million, and the actual came in at 36 million. And I'm just, or sorry, yeah, 36 million. So I'm just wondering where that discrepancy was, and is it the fact that we haven't taken in the REC Center yet, or exactly what is that?
Ms. Radigan?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The majority of that difference is the acquisition of TCAs, so you are correct in that sense. So we do have the REC Center, but we haven't actually capitalized or amortized it yet because it's not fully in service. So you'll notice acquisition of TCAs, we had a budget of 13 million and our actual was 41 million.
Okay, so that's just the delay caused by the delay. Okay. And if I could, just one other quick question. So when I first got involved with the auditing process, this was quite a while ago, long before your time, Jazz and when Jim was around, the auditor often had a great big list of vulnerabilities and went through, you know, these vulnerabilities, and staff was asked to respond to them, you know, that there was no check and balance here, there was something wrong here, whatever. It's looking like we don't have those vulnerabilities anymore, that we've we've pretty well knocked that list off, and so that would be a good thing, I'm assuming.
Through you, Mr. Chair. You are correct. We do initially meet with our finance liaison committee, and that's where we do discuss thoroughly our financial statements, and that's where council members have an opportunity to sit down with our auditors and have a discussion if there are any internal control issues. But our audit does look at extensively our internal controls. And throughout time, yes, we have gotten way better, and we have reduced the risk and ensure that we manage our internal controls adequately. I just wanted to add that we do do a management letter each year. This year, there was only a couple small minor items on the management letter, which is, I think, what you're talking about. And through our audit, we walk through the controls, and if there's anything that comes to our attention, we'll put it in the management letter. One of the things that I highlighted at our committee meeting last week was cybersecurity. And I had recommended to the committee and to the staff that perhaps you should, to me, that's the biggest risk on municipalities and non-for-profits now, and council may want to look into getting a cybersecurity study, which is different than the audit, of course.
Okay, Counselor Heen?
Thank you. On page 41, you have works of art. The municipality owns various works of art and historic artifacts displayed at various locations, including the Aralia Public Library, the Leacock Museum, and the Aralia Opera House. The historic cost of the historic cost of these items is not included in tangible capital assets. I know that we have some very valuable pieces of artwork, and I am wondering if we've had any of these appraised, and if not, should we have appraisal values on them?
Staff?
Through you, Mayor Clark. It's our understanding that under our PSAB rules, we are not allowed to report works of art, the value of works of art in the financial statements. I don't know if our auditor can confirm that also. So they are under the PSAB reporting requirements, they are specifically excluded from assets. Without a doubt, there is there is great value in the artwork that is possessed by the city, but under the accounting regulations, it's difficult to quantify that, and so specifically PSAB excludes those.
Any other questions? Counselor Sepola?
Thank you. Through our auditor, through you to our auditor. In layman's terms, Aralia is in good financial shape, am I right?
I get asked that question all the time. I think if you go to page three on the financial statements, it's really your balance sheet. It has all your assets and all your liabilities and your surplus. And if you can compare between years, your net financial assets, 36 million this year, last year was 42 million. A big part of your financial assets are investment in Aralia Power Corporation, which is almost 45 million. But if you look at, if you back that out, your working capital has been very consistent with with prior years. And the other thing to highlight is, in your financial liabilities, I don't know if everybody can see that, your landfill and your, well, your long-term debt has been reduced from $10 million to $8 million. Your landfill costs went up, but that's an estimate with the engineering department's kind of a non-cash item. So a lot of your payables have been going down. As I mentioned to council, or to our committee last week, you know, you can have, you know, $100 million in financial assets, and next year, if your capital asset management plan says you're spending $120 million, you know, next year, you'll be in the hole $20 million. So you really, to look at your financial viability as a town, you have to look at your capital asset management plans for the next 10 years. Do you have enough surplus to cover that? And that's really, it's really the future. This is a historical statement. But having said that, your net financial assets are positive, which is a good thing. I do audit a lot of municipalities. There might be negative $10 million or $20 million, but then they've got all their work done. So, you know, maybe in five years, they're higher than you are. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of council? All right. I need a mover and a seconder for the motion, please. Counselor Lauer, Counselor Campbell, that this committee recommends to counsel that report, Treasurer 2019-GO6 dated July 11, 2019, from the Treasury Department regarding the 2018 financial statements and audit report be received as information. Any more discussion? All those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Now, Mr. Gupta, you're up again.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Staff have received the results of the tender for the City Center North Roof Replacement and Deck Repair. Four acceptable bids were received ranging from $1,287,288 to $1,621,842. All bids were over the allotted budget, and staff are requesting the budget be increased so the project can move forward this year as recommended by the engineering consultants. And staff are recommending that Burdane Construction Services be awarded the contract as they are the lowest acceptable bid. I will add that certain sectors in the construction industry are seeing a 20% to 30% increase in costs this year due to the GTA and surrounding areas' busy private and public sector building programs and the shortage of trades in the industry as well. Thank you.
Mr. Gupta, could you just verify the dollar figure that you had said was at 1 point? In our report, it says $1,578,000, and you had said it was 1.6.
The request to increase from 1.1 million to $1,578,000.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Counselor Lauer?
Just a quick one. Is the 20 years a conservative estimate? For a $1.5 million roof, like, I would be hoping I'd get more than 20 years, but I'm just wondering if you're just being conservative there.
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, that would be a sort of more accurate, middle-of-the-road estimate that roofs 20 years are needing to be replaced now.
That's a flat roof.
Correct.
Do we ever look in terms of some other structure? You know, like actually peaking it and putting metal on or something like that, or, I mean, I don't know, it just seems to me an awful lot of money to pay for half a roof.
Mr. Sutcliffe.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a note on that question specifically related to this building. This is a designated heritage building or property, so the flat roof is part of what this building's designed. So to change it to a peaked roof, a gable roof, or one of those types, it would need to go through the municipal heritage committee, and there would have to be decisions made to alter the building and its architectural design in that manner.
Mr. Gupta, anything to add?
Certainly through you, Mr. Chair. So I'll explain that a bit. So a big part of this construction is the repair of the wood. So the roof material itself is a portion of the cost, and I think what you're referring to is sort of a roof that would be replaced in a normal situation. This is not a normal type of building with the wood structure that has deteriorated over time. In 2006, a roof was put on a roof, and that work was not done underneath. So the wood has continued to deteriorate over time, and we're at the point now that we're, both have to come off, and it has to be fixed properly. The wood itself will remain for tens of years. The wood that's here has lasted almost 100 years, so that component will last a long time. The roof membrane itself, due to weather and solar, will wear over time. So the structure itself will be good a long time. The roofing materials itself will last 20 years.
Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Counselor Clustra. Through you to Mr. Gupta. There's an item that says $30,000 for the relocation of staff and rooftop antennas. I assume that the staff would be relocated within the building, not going to rent space somewhere for them. So I assume further that the bulk of the $30,000 is for the relocation of the antennas. Is that correct?
Mr. Gupta.
Certainly through you, Mr. Chair. The antennas are about $10,000 of that. The $20,000 is, we are relocating within the building. We are relocating three departments, and there's a computer system, as well as all the equipment, has to be moved as well. So we've given ourselves enough, there's a lot of people and a lot of equipment to be moved in a short period of time, and to be up and working, and be working throughout the projects to make sure. So that's, this money is to make sure that we are able to do that.
Wait for the motion. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the motion, please? Counselor Eamon, Counselor Sapola, that this committee recommends to counsel that his recommended report FM 2019-02 dated July 11, 2019, from the Facilities and Special Projects Department, Burdane Construction Limited, be awarded contract FSP-19-02 to supply and install the equipment and materials for the Aurelia City Center Roof Replacement and Deck Repair North Wing for the tendered sum of $1,287,288 plus HST. And then the budget allocation from the Aurelia City Center Roof Replacement and Deck Repair Design Fees, North Wing approved capital budget be increased from 1.1 million to $1,578,000, with additional allotment to be funded from the capital contingency reserve, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. Any more discussion? Contingency reserve? All those in favor? That's Carrie. Next, I have Development Services and Engineering Department, Re-Highway 11, West Street Bridge Replacement, and Mr. Seer and Mr. Sutcliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. Report number DSC 1926 provides an update on the Ministry of Transportation's West Street Bridge Project and an analysis of the options to include an active transportation facility across the bridge. The MTO commenced its Class EA process in November of 2018 and held public information session on June 6 to gather feedback from interested public. At this meeting, there was a strong voice for separated pedestrian and cycling facilities across this bridge, rather than the combined multi-use trail that the MTO had originally proposed. The MTO's design consultant took the comments into consideration and provided us with three alternatives for the city of Aurelia and township of Severn to comment on. Staff is recommending that council endorse alternative three, which consists of an at-grade, two at-grade bicycle lanes in each direction and one sidewalk on the north side. This alternative is preferred by the MTO, as well as the township of Severn, and will create a safer environment for cars, pedestrians, and bicycles crossing the highway. Upon completion of the Class EA this fall, the MTO will continue with the detailed design in 2020 and have scheduled construction tentatively for 2021. Thank you for your time. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Ahim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After the public meeting, I had a number of emails and phone calls from cyclists who really felt it was vitally important to separate the cyclists from the pedestrians. They felt that the cyclists travel at a much higher speed than pedestrians, and so that they, having the two groups on the same path, were not compatible, and that cyclist tourism was a growing factor in our community, and that we should be wanting to make sure that we grow that cyclist tourism in our community. And so it was for that reason that I'm in support of this third option. But I did have a question for Mr. Seer. Do you have any idea how many pedestrians would be crossing the bridge and what the cyclist tourism industry would be like?
So the MTO did some traffic and pedestrian studies. I don't have that information with me today, but I can get it for you. I know it is part of their Class EA.
Counselor Lauer, then Counselor Eamon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also in favor of option three, sort of. The question I have is, why can we not put a barrier on that? They've reduced the size of the bridge to 14.3 meters. I see they were willing to go to 14.8, 14.55. You could put a barrier in there and not really stretch things out that much. And the reason I'm saying this is, okay, we're down to a two-meter walkway. We're on a bridge. There's no place to go to get out of the way, other than jump over the bridge or off the bridge. I still think it's a safety issue. You know, bridges do ice up a little earlier than often other roads. What is the reason that they will not consider a barrier there?
Through, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Lauer. So this was considered. If you remember, a month or so ago, WSP, the MTO's consultant, did come before council and do a presentation on the Class EA process. They did note that as a desire to create a barrier to separate the cyclist or pedestrian and the traffic lane. So it was contemplated as part of the process. The preferred option is just at-grade cycling lanes without the barricade, or sorry, the barrier, and the main reason is for snow removal operations. One additional obstacle in the way kind of hinders and forces snow to stay within the cycling lane or the, in the traffic lane, sorry. So our multimodal transportation master plan that's in draft right now recommends this alternative, so an at-grade cycling lane that's buffered from the traffic lane by a .5-meter strip. So that's, hence our recommendation meets the multimodal transportation plan, as well as the MTO's Class EA design preferred option.
Counselor Eamon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to staff. Have we budgeted for the capital costs of building the trail in Aurelia that would connect with this bridge, so that we just don't have a trail over the bridge, but we have the ability to get cyclists and walkers and runners to the bridge?
Through, Mr. Chair. So that is, again, part of our AT plan. We haven't connected those facilities yet, but in our draft multimodal transportation master plan, there is an adjusted network that would, that we will work towards in our capital plan that would address the connections across the bridge and within the city.
And we will be seeing that in the timely fashion, so that in 2021, we'll hopefully have achieved a degree of connectivity.
Through, Mr. Chair, absolutely. So right now, as I said, the MTMP is in draft. We're just sort of critiquing it and working through it, and we'll use it to inform our budget process this fall.
Any other questions? Counselor Falles.
I was just going to ask if there was any, because Counselor Lauer had just asked about this, a barrier in between the cyclists and the road itself? Because, of course, as you're going over the road, if you're on a bike, there's not a lot of alternative, you know, you're kind of, it's the road or nothing. So is there any interest from other counselors to put up some type of barrier in between cyclists and the road itself?
Counselor Lauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I actually would like to amend this to urge the MTO to consider a barrier along there, even if there was a cost associated with it. I'd be interested to know that, what it is. I get the point about snow removal, but, you know, one person gets whacked out there, and the snow seems pretty insignificant, in my opinion. So, yeah, I would like to actually make an amendment that the MTO consider a barrier between the sidewalk and the bike lane.
Second, Counselor Lauer. Counselor Falles, yeah. Okay, I'll put the motion on the floor. I need a mover and a seconder, please.
Through, Mr. Chair. We don't have a motion on the floor yet, and so I'll just look to Mr. Seer. Just, there are various options in the report, and if there's an alternative motion that needs to be placed on the floor to capture Counselor Lauer's intent, then we can do that this time. There is no motion currently on the floor.
Okay. Counselor Eamon.
If I may, before we get to actual putting motions, can I have a question to, through you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Seer? In option three, yeah, in option three, would it be the intention of MTO that they would use a single pass snow clearing of clearing both the road and the cycling lanes? In other words, they would go from curb to curb in snow clearing across the bridge? So that in that model, a barrier would be problematic in the sense that that wouldn't allow that type of snow clearing. We'd have to, somebody would have to find a way to put a snowplow just on the cycling lanes, or alternatively, go to option one, which is returning to a combined cycling/walking. Is that what I'm sensing?
Absolutely, yeah. You're exactly correct. And I'm sure Mr. Shell is cringing behind me here, because trying to clear the snow on a cycling lane, which is covered by minimum maintenance standards, with a barrier, you would need an additional piece of equipment. So the intent is to clear it with the sidewalk plow, like you say, from curb to, or sorry, the road plow from curb to curb, clear the cycling lane and the traffic lane at the same time.
Counselor Ahim. Oh, sorry, Counselor Eamon, go ahead. Yeah. Sure. Counselor Ahim.
Speaking to that, if there's doing the one swipe in each direction with the snowplow, might we lose the bike lane in the wintertime? Or maybe it won't be needed?
Through, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, there is a little bit of snow storage on the bridge. I believe, and Mr. Shell may be able to comment on it, but I think our force has cleared the bridges about once a week on Sundays, from what his staff was telling me. So, you know, until then, there will be a window of snow that would exist likely on the cycling lane.
So that would mean that we would probably lose the cycling lane in the wintertime?
Through, Mr. Chair. So there is buffer strips there. So, you know, ideally, we would try and keep the snow within the buffer strips and maintain the full width of the two-meter cycling lane, but, you know, it depends on the snowfall and the event that's happening.
Sorry, Mr. Shell, did you want to answer?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, when we looked at this, the actual challenge that we saw, if you actually had the barrier, was ultimately, we would have to remove the snow every time we had a snowfall. Currently, we are able to actually maintain on a weekly basis and remove snow on a weekly basis. The biggest challenge here would be somehow we need to have some type of machine that would look after that two-meter and clear it every time, which to us would be a significant challenge. So from the other point of view, we would look at pushing snow initially up against the barrier, current barrier, that is, the side of the bridge itself, and we would use most likely that as some storage initially, and then we would have some storage in the .5-meter buffer strip. But it would reduce the challenges definitely if, then, if you had barriers.
Thank you. Counselor Falles.
I was just curious, I hate to kind of brainstorm different ones on the spot like this, but looking at option one, would there be, because I know one of the complaints was, or not complaints, but concerns, was having pedestrians on the same height. was, or not complaints, but concerns, was having pedestrians on the same height as cyclists. Would there be any way of having an additional level for pedestrians and then cyclists, and then the border itself? Is that a consideration?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure I quite follow you. When you say different level, are you talking about the raised pedestrian facility, similar to Option Two?
Sorry, I threw the chair again. So Schedule A, it's page 191 of our booklets here, they've got everything on the same level, but there's the border in between. Would there be any way of doing that, but with the pedestrian, pedestrians above the cyclists? Kind of like a mixed, yeah, like a mixed version, kind of?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, certainly. So this part of the process that the MTO is under right now is to gather our feedback. So if that's something that, you know, is desired at this level, we can comment back to them and ask them to contemplate options. So if I'm understanding it correctly, it'd be like our Option Three, but with that barrier at the pedestrian walkway, rather than the cycling lane?
Ralph first.
First option with the raised, raised pedestrian walkway? Yeah, absolutely. We can comment to ask the MTO's consultant to contemplate or take a look at that type of design.
Thanks, Wes. Mr. Suggan?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a note, as noted in the report, at this point, there is no, no way of contemplating what the costs of this bridge structure are going to be for the municipality. So each thing that we ask them to do has a potential of adding more costs that they'll ask us to pay for. So I'm not using that as a scare tactic here, just it's a reality. We don't know what they're going to tell us. We need to pay for all the pedestrian and cycling infrastructure on the bridge, if anything at all. But each design change has to be accommodated, and then that brings with an increased cost, likely.
Counsel Sepola?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our staff. I attended the MTO briefing on, at the Hyrum Inn, and one of the things I mentioned to them is the stealth-hinged posts that fall flat into the road in the wintertime. His concern was the snow plowing and everything else, if they put permanent barriers. But the stealth-hinged post falls flat in and then locks itself during the summer, or whenever he's able to. And to me, that's, if you want to, I can send you the link to it, if you like, and that makes a little more sense. A lot of municipalities are going that for their crosswalks and everything else, where they need to have separation between trail and that, or going to those in the wintertime for snow removal, it makes it really easy. You flatten them, they lock, and then in the spring or summer, they lock up. So I'm just wondering if you could, and they said they would look into it, so I'm just wondering if you would remind them to look into it, because that makes it, makes a lot more sense than having a permanent barrier there, where the snow removal is going to create a problem, a serious problem, they were telling me, and that. The other question I have for you, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is the Burnside Road and going into Oak Ridge and that, they were talking about a roundabout as well. Have you heard any more from MTO, whether they're going to consider that, or is that Severn's job to look into that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's, yes, Severn Township that looks after that intersection, and I don't believe they have any plans in addressing that at this time.
Because that would create a better traffic, but we may be taking it over, so it doesn't surprise me.
Counselor Lauer, sorry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my motion is going to make it to the floor first here, I hope. But I just want to clarify that when I'm talking about a barrier, I'm talking about a barrier between the bike lane and the pedestrian walkway, not the, not the road and the, not the road and the bike lane. So the bike lane, they seem to be quite comfortable on the road, and so that's fine. But I'm talking about a barrier between the pedestrian walkway and the road. And so in my opinion, the snow removal isn't that significant, because I assume if you're doing a sidewalk or a trail up to the bridge, that's, as Counsel Reiman's asked about, that's going to take you across the bridge, that that same machine can go over the bridge and clear the pedestrian walkway in some way. There will certainly be more maintenance required for the bike lanes, but that's a given. I mean, if you're going to offer that extra service, and I believe that there's additional operational costs, you're just going to have to clear it off in some manner. It's not a large, it's not a long bridge, so it's not that big of an effort. But what I'm talking about simply is to protect the pedestrians from road traffic that will or could wander or hit ice and go into a spin on the bridge or whatever, and the bikes are left alone out on the, out on the road.
Mr. Suggan?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just for some clarification for staff, as we're trying to prepare a potential alternate option here. So what staff has recommended is, in Option One of the report, is Alternative Design Three, which is where the cycling lanes are on the street, as a dedicated cycling lane that are two meters wide and separated from vehicular traffic by a half-meter buffer strip. Pedestrians are on a raised sidewalk, separated by a barrier curb, as they would be in many city streets. So in that alternative, pedestrians are protected first by the buffer of the bike lane, which provides two and a half meters of space outside of the travel lane of the vehicles, and then by a barrier curb. If I understand what's being asked for now is a separate, like a Jersey barrier curb, which is shown in Alternative One, which is separating a multi-use trail between the road and the multi-use trail. So, but I understand, if I'm understanding correctly, and I'm really looking for clarification here, is what Counselor Lauer is thinking of is Alternative Three, but with two Jersey barriers, one on either side of the bridge to separate the cycling lanes from the vehicular lanes?
No. No, all, no, all I'm looking for is one Jersey, what'd you call it, Jersey?
Jersey barrier?
Jersey barrier on the pedestrian walkway side, right, separating the pedestrian walkway from all other traffic in the bike lane. And to your point of, there's lots of streets that, you know, are right beside the highway. But in the case of a bridge, you've got nowhere to go, right? If some car starts spinning or whatever, you, you know, you're not going to run onto somebody's lawn or whatever. You're trapped on that bridge, and that's, that would be my concern. So it's just the pedestrian walkway. The bikers seem to be quite happy on the road and don't require any protection.
Thank you for that clarification.
Counsel Follis?
While I think I would have preferred something like between the cars and the bikes, I will support Counselor Lauer's amendment there, because I think it is, it's a real necessary thing to add, in terms of ensuring that there's safety for pedestrians. And certainly, all of these options does accommodate that to some degree, but I think the more boundary we put up between vehicles and pedestrians, the better. Thanks.
Counsel Reiman?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question. That barrier, is it, is it of enough substance to stop a vehicle from crashing through it in a, in a accident situation? Is it that kind of a barrier, like they have on, down the middle of the 400?
Through you, Mr. Chair, exactly. It's called a Jersey barrier. They're a few meters long, and they're solid concrete, so they do use them on the highway through construction zones.
Okay, so I need a mover and seconder for the amended motion. Counselor Follis and Counselor Lauer. Sorry, amended, it's just a preferred option. This committee recommends to council that further to Report DSC-19-26, dated July the 8th, 2019, from the Development Services and Engineering Department. The Ministry of Transportation has preferred Alternative Number Three, cross-section of at-grade bike lanes on both sides, with one sidewalk across the West Street Bridge, be endorsed in principle, and that the Ministry of Transportation consider the addition of a barrier to separate the dedicated pedestrian walkway from the bike lane, and that stat be directed to report back to council once the Ministry of Transportation has completed the detailed design. Any more discussion? All those in favor? That's carried. Would any members of council like a five-minute recess? Counsel Reiman, Counsel Follis, all those in favor? Thank you.[1203.88]
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of council. The County of Simcoe's Lynx intercity bus service is scheduled to commence August 6, 2019, travelling weekdays between Arilla and Barry. The Development Services and Engineering Department are seeking council's approval to enter into a fare integration agreement with the Simcoe Lynx service and Arilla Transit. This will encourage riders to utilise both transit systems to complete their entire trip with the benefit of a reduced fare. In addition to expanding the area serviced by transit, it is also anticipated to increase ridership, a win-win for Arilla end-area transit users. We'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Councillor Hean, then Councillor Ainsworth.
Thank you. It looks to me, when I look at the schedule, that it really basically is going to Georgian College and Barry and RVH. Would that be correct?
Through you, Chair, that is correct. So, the Lynx service, from the county's perspective, is to link other transit services together, not to replace those. So, the two stops in Barry are Georgian College and RVH. The two stops, key stops in Arilla are Georgian College and Lakehead University, with a stop at OPP available. And in-between, there's stops at Forest Home Industrial Park, just south of Arilla, the county airport, Midway, and Napoleon Industries. So, those are the three intermediate stops, with those other two at each end.
Supplementary? So, what does that do for us?
It does a number of things for us. It does a number of things for people in other communities as well. What this does is it will allow transit users, for example, in Barry, to come to Arilla for employment, or for visiting, or for shopping. In turn, it also offers and expands Arilla's transit service, so that if I'm a transit rider in Arilla, and I'm a student at Georgian College, for example, or I'm an employee, or I'm trying to become an employee at Napoleon Industries, it allows me to go to those places without having to own a car.
One final question. To me, it seems like it's just getting us to the edge of Barry. It's not getting us to the downtown Barry. Or, more importantly, I would be much happier if it would link us to the Go Bus, or the Go Train in Barry. You know, I would love to see us hooked up to the Go Train. I take the Go Train, or Go Bus to Toronto, which is the seniors' rate, it's about 850 or 860. And I find that very useful. I'm not sure exactly how useful this would be.
Sure. Through you, Chair, to Councillor Hean. This is the, sort of, the first link between Arilla and Barry, or this is the first route that they've proposed between Arilla and Barry. What they are aware of now is they don't want to replace our service. So, they wanted to kind of get to the peripheral of Arilla areas that Arilla Transit services at our end, rather than follow the Georgian bus all the way downtown. They're going to get you to a point that we service thoroughly. They're doing the same thing at the Barry end, with RVH and Georgian College. So, from those two points, they're very active stops within the Barry transit system. It can take you anywhere to Barry, or to the other side, that could take you to other Lynx destinations, Midland-Penetang, for example. They, at this time, at the initial service, they're not going direct with this Lynx service to, say, the Allendale Go Station. It isn't ruled out to happen in the future. They're going to sort of follow and see what the demand is. If that became something that was very high demand, they'd certainly consider it. But at this time, they will get us to that transit service. From that, then the Barry Transit will service that Go Station, as well as other areas.
Councillor Ainsworth?
Yes, through Mr. Chair, I will be supporting the motion on the screen, and be happy to move that when the time comes. Really excited for this project moving forward with the county. I know it's been about 10-plus years that people have been asking for Arilla and Barry to link up with transit. And this is something that has been mentioned, that is not so much repeating services, but just connecting services. So, right now, if you do decide to take that bus down to get off at Georgian College or RVH, you can hop on the Barry Transit, and then get to that Go Transit terminal, which is something that's exciting. And it's, you know, at the end of the day, it's something that's saving people money, because you're also not duplicating the services as well, because there's really no point in having two buses run the exact same route to the same spot. You might as well just fund one, and have it connect with the other one, and then transfer over.
Thank you, Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Councillor Clustra. I think this is absolutely great. It's great to see the county and the city working together. Yeah, to echo Councillor Ainsworth's sentiment, I mean, for $3, you can go from Arilla to Barry. I mean, I'd probably pay more than that in gas to get there. So, I think it's terrific, and I look forward to it expanding as we go.
Councillor Eamon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you comment just briefly on the experience they've had this past year on the route between Midland-Penetang and Barry? Because it is my understanding that it connects in the same fashion. It doesn't go downtown in Barry, and connects to whatever transit system they have in Midland-Penetang. And if I'm not mistaken, they were saying at the transit meeting that they've actually had more ridership than they had anticipated, that it's been more successful.
Yeah, sure. Through, Mr. Chair, to Councillor Eamon, yes. So, the current service that the county introduced a year ago runs between Barry to Midland-Penetang. They just drop basically at that, a key stop at Midland-Penetang, and then that service sort of services that area. At the Barry end, similar idea. That route's a little longer, with some sort of different communities in between. And so, the fare on that route, from one end to the other, the ultimate fare is $6. They essentially have a sort of a small, medium, large on that fare. So, the small would be Barry, so the midhurst area, the medium is an Elmville stop, and then the large is all the way. They do offer a smart pay system, that currently, they don't have monthly passes, you just load credit to that card. And with that, they ask their passengers to tap on the bus and off the bus. If you forget to tap off, you automatically build the highest rate. So, it's to your benefit if you have one of the shorter stops to do that. The Arilla-Berry stop's a little more direct, so they determined not to complicate things with the different fare structure. It's simply, it's a $4 fare for anyone there. So, what this agreement does, to incent, to give some incentive, so for the Arilla Transit user, if you take your transit to this stop to catch the Barry bus, you ask for a transfer receipt at the time. That piece of paper gives you a $1 discount, to make it a $3 fare. In turn, we sort of would offer the same thing. So, what we're doing is we're offering a discount to what we could consider a new driver, or a new passenger. Those coming from Barry, for whatever reason, employment or leisure, ask for that fare, they can ride our service for a $1 discount. We're still getting some fare in that particular case, but when they return from that destination back through to Barry, then they pay full fare. So, we acquire a new transit rider at a slight discount to encourage them on our system, but we get full fare. They get to enjoy our system, and hopefully, we get a customer from that, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question from the Chair. What type of payment system will there be? Will this smart pay system be implemented on these buses as well? Or would just be cash fares? Or were there any kind of loadable cards available at any certain time?
Okay, through, to you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the payment system that they currently offer with Simcoe Lynx is cash, or they sell a smart card. So, they'll sell a smart card at some ticket vendors where they sell at their office. They also sell it on the bus itself. So, you could enter that bus and say, you know what, I'm going to use this a bit, I'm going to buy a $50 credit on this smart card, do it with your, you give them cash there, and they could give you a card loaded for $50. That smart card system is the same system that we brought forward last year to our capital budget that was defeated. We're proposing to bring that forward again this year.
All right. Thank you. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the motion, please? Councillor Sepola and Councillor Campbell. This committee recommends to council that as recommended in report DSC 19-28 dated July 9, 2019, from the Development Services and Engineering Department, the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into the fare integration agreement with the Corporation of the County of Simcoe for the provision of the Simcoe Lynx bus service as set out in Schedule A of the report, and that Chapter 5458 of the City of Arilla Municipal Code, user fee, transit be amended as set out in Schedule B of the report. Any more discussion? All those in favor? I'll move on to inquiries. Councillor Eamon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two inquiries. The first is the one we're going to deal with now. Just a little background on this inquiry, because it is seeking your support council colleagues to have staff consider the logistics of our city working with the Simcoe County Archives to address current and future archival needs of city departments and agencies. This initiated from OMA, who have, are experiencing a significant lack of, emerging lack of space in their secure archival operation, which they have in the museum. The difficulty is, they use it for artefacts, and it's currently being used for a lot of documents. And they wondered if there was any possibility that our city would be interested in working out an arrangement with Simcoe County, where those documents could be lodged at Simcoe County on a long-term basis, in their facility, but made available digitally, digitally, to anyone who's interested in accessing those documents, and physically available if one needed that by going to the archive. As a result of that, Simcoe County, or at least OMA, arranged a tour of the archives that Councillor Hean and I, and city staff, Jacqueline, I think, was with us, went, along with a couple of people from the museum. And we had a tour of the archive. It's the first time I had been in the building. I'm really quite impressed in chatting with the archivists. They are, they have a facility that could easily accommodate the documentation that exists in our city. City of Barry already uses that, as a separated city, it's using the facility. There's a fee for payment, so that would be part of the feasibility study. It is a state-of-the-art archive. It is, though smaller, it's on a comparable level with the Archives of Canada in terms of its ability. It has several different sections that have different humidities and temperature control, depending on the documents and their requirements. So, it's something that would be extremely difficult for the City of Arilla to replicate at any reasonable cost for our volume of work, and yet, it's close by. So, that's the reason for the inquiry. It would mean that historic documents that currently reside in various locations within our city, here at the City Hall, or I think the Opera House has some space over there, the library, the Leacock home, these documents could be assembled and transported over time to the archives, where they would be documented, they would be digitized, and then prepared, and they wrap them in paper that doesn't deteriorate, and things of that nature, and then store it in the Arilla section, which, you know, would have our coat of arms on it and all of that. But anyway, that's the intention of this inquiry, to determine the feasibility of something of that happening. And if there is a seconder, I would be happy to move the motion.
Councillor Hean? Okay, if you want to comment as well?
I'm more than happy to second the motion, and I can say that I was really very impressed when I toured the facility with Councillor Eamon. It's a very unimposing-looking building from the front, and then you go in, and it just keeps going on, and on, and on, as you tour through it. And they do have space. And so, if we move now, they can accommodate us. If we waited a few years down the road, they might not be able to. So, I think it's imperative that we look at moving forward with this at this time.
Just one aside, Mr. Chair, if I can. At this time of year, if you're looking at the calendar over, the weather over the next few days, and it's going up into the 30s, I would suggest a tour of the archives. It's an extremely comfortable place to be.
Councillor Fallas?
Thanks, through the Chair. I wanted to start by saying, I really do appreciate the work that Councillor Eamon has put into this. At this point, I think I'm going to vote against this. First, because of the fact that we're considering several different plans. The Leacock Master Plan, I believe we're in the process of doing a Culture Master Plan, as well as the municipal review. And I think any one of those three could, in some ways, be impacted. And I think also, there's an opportunity to consider many different ways of addressing this issue, including an option to do this locally as well. So, while, again, I really do appreciate the work that's being done, I think, for the time being, I'll have to vote against. Thanks.
Councillor Sepola?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to our CAO, or to Councillor Eamon. What do we do with our documents now that need to be preserved, not just from the museum, but from the city records and all that? I mean, it might be...
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this point, this report is simply asking for, this request is asking for a report. In that report, we'll identify what we're currently doing with all of our records and our archives. And so, that report will identify in detail. But in terms of what we have right now, just at a high level, we have storage facilities for records, municipal records, out at A Storage, and we also have storage at the Opera House. So, we don't have sort of one general area. So, the report will capture all of that.
Thank you. That was my concern. Maybe we should be looking at, I'll support this until we get the report, and then see what happens. But maybe we should be looking at a bigger issue, where we have our own storage and our own facility, because of the amount of history and storage that we need for council, and for Leacock, and for OMA. But I will support the motion the way it is.
Mr. Chair, I'm more than happy if staff are willing to comment in the report what might be the implications of the City of Arilla duplicating the kind of facility that would be available, that is available at the Simcoe County Archives. I mean, the issue there, from my understanding, is it was, it's been a very considerable financial investment that the county has put into that building, that strikes me as, considering the finite, the small, relatively small, finite space that our documents would occupy in that facility. To duplicate that for in Arilla would be uneconomical. But that's, if the report can comment on that, that would be ideal.
Councillor Hean?
I was supposed to say pretty much what Councillor Eamon said, the cost of replicating what the County of Simcoe has, I think, would be just uneconomical. And it's not that we're giving up our documents, there certainly would still be accessible to us, they would be digitized. It would make our documents more accessible to us than they are at the present time.
Any more discussion? Councillor Sepola?
Just briefly on that, I don't disagree, but I think what happens, too, we have to have storage. So, we're duplicating. And I think part of the thing is, we look at the report, and see what the report says, and if we're duplicating to the point of the cost and everything else, then I think, I think it's, at least the report will outline that, I hope.
Councillor Eamon?
Mr. Chair, we asked about the procedure for transferring documentation to the archives, and I think the City of Barry is a good model, that they monthly... the archives, and I think the City of Berry is a good model that they monthly, so they store documents like council minutes and council documents of that nature and things of that nature on a monthly basis. And once a month, they send a city vehicle to the archives with a box that gets transferred. So no, they're not duplicating the storage of all the documents that we would have. In fact, the museum's initial interest in this is that the current storage of documents, which are fragile and of historic nature, put there would be, would open up additional space in the museum for the next 10 years or so to store artifacts, because the archive takes paper, not typically a thing, you know? So that, that is not replacement, but it would just free it up. And, and the point would be that the county archives is archiving all the documents for the county, all of the individual municipalities, whether 24, I think it is, municipalities within the county? No? 17? All of those, plus the City of Berry, plus interestingly, two or three industries that have very long history in the county and have contracted with the archives to store. Like the shipyards in Collingwood, when they closed, they had a great history of documentation on that, on that enterprise that would have been lost if it hadn't, if they had not been able to put them into the archives and, and make them available for historians and others who do that kind of interesting research. I think it's interesting research. That's what they said it was. So that's, again, just the concept.
All right. Thank you. I'll read the motion. Moved by Counsel Raymond, seconded by Counsel Heen. That this committee recommends to counsel that staff be directed to prepare a report with respect to the following: the logistics of working with the Simcoe County Archives to address the archival needs of city departments and agencies. All those in favor? That's Carrie. Counsel Raymond, you have another inquiry?
I do, Mr. Chairman. If I may, this inquiry is to have staff determine the scope, scale, and cost of commissioning an economic impact study. That's an assessment of Soldiers Memorial Hospital on the City of Auriya and our surrounding areas with a focus of, also with a focus of the impact of the hospital on the downtown. I'm serving as the mayor's designate on the hospital, new hospital of tomorrow steering committee. In our meeting back a month or so ago, the group was debating, and will continue to do that with a meeting tomorrow, actually, the criteria that should be used to determine the location and, and the amenities that would be in a hospital. These are other than the clinically defined amenities that would be in the hospital. What are the things that would be comfortable for patients and visitors and staff? It was evident in those discussions that everyone accepted the fact that a hospital in Auriya is an important community asset and that we need to have a hospital in our community and that the Board of Directors of the hospital had confirmed in their decisions that any future hospital should be located in the city. But it was not, they had not considered in the, in the narrower sense that our current hospital has a significant impact economically as an employer and as an engine of economic development in our downtown core and that we need to understand the impact of potentially relocating to another site. Not that that would be inappropriate, because it may be that that's by far the best thing for us to do in this community, and we will have ample opportunity to review that over time. But at the moment, I felt that it was important for us to be prepared for any discussions of that nature. And as a result, I put forward this inquiry. I did copy the hospital CEO on this, and he, he and I have had a number of conversations subsequently. And he concurs that there is no question that the economic impact of the hospital is a criteria, though he doesn't want it to become the only criteria. And I reassured him that, certainly from my own personal perspective, and I thought that of council, that the health and well-being of the citizens of Auriya have, are the same motivation that he has in running an acute care hospital, because his clients are my constituents and our constituents, and that that would take the precedent. But this is one of the criteria that maybe we should be adding to the equation. His one comment to me about the motion as it was circulated is that the last phrase, where the hospital is currently located, does, may give the impression that the, what we're looking at is the current location versus other locations. And in fact, there are other potential locations in the City of Auriya that are, that are adjacent to the downtown that would have a similar impact on the downtown core as the hospital has at the current time. So it is my intention to put forward a motion, if I can find a seconder where that phrase has been deleted, if my council colleagues will allow that to happen, or if the clerk tells me there's a better way to do it. But that, that is purely a subtlety in order not to deliver a message out to our community that it's either or. It's, it's the fact that there are a multiple number of locations in our community that are being looked at and that the assessment process that will go on through the hospital's steering committee and elsewhere will narrow that down to a select group. I just wanted to make sure that we had hard data available, evidence-based data, about the impact of our hospital in and around not only our city and area, because I think that's important, but also in terms of the core of our city.
Counselor Sepola.
I'd be happy to second Counsel Raymond's motion, but I have a couple of questions, if I may.
You may.
This, of all the time I've known Counsel Raymond on council, this is probably one of the most important inquiries you've put forward. The impact that this will have on our community and our downtown is unbelievable. So this comes at a right time when we are considering where that hospital should be. I guess since this has been out, has been out, I had a few phone calls that they will fight tooth and nail, even take it to OMB, they said, but I guess they're not familiar with the new criteria for, for it, but they will fight it tooth and nail if it moves from the existing site. My question is to our clerk, or sorry, our CIO. The hospital does have the ability or the authority to expropriate, do they not?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Is my understanding yet that yes, they do?
Thank you. And that's where I think this, this particular report will help us determine that, and that becomes, this, this report will become the most important thing we've done in the last few years.
Counsel Raymond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I might just have a follow-up comment on Counsel Lauer's comment, to just, Counselor Sepola, sorry. I'm, 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 I'm a lot older than Steve, but I have his disease. The process for new hospitals in a community is a process that is managed between the hospital board under the Hospital Act and the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care and their capital branch. There's a whole series of very, very challenging and difficult steps to go through. It does not contemplate that process. The involvement of a municipality as a decision-maker in that exercise. In other words, you don't get a veto on that. What we are in this particular case is a hospital board and a hospital leader who has recognized that partnering with the municipality, both in terms of potential location and, to be quite candid, in terms of the capital costs of a new hospital in this era, which are huge, and that the City of Auriya and its citizens would be involved in that, is important. So the door was open to the county and to the city to sit at the table. And this is the first time, and it's rare across the province, where this is an opportunity. So in that role, I have the opportunity to, to raise questions and prod and, and observe what's happening, and this is a product of, of that exercise, and it provides us with some additional evidence. But it's evidence that we will develop, in other words, in terms of reference, I hope we will have the opportunity at the staff level to develop those in concert with the hospital, so that when the results come out and when we get the data, it will be something that will be valuable to the hospital as it goes forward in its exercise with the province, not just in terms of establishing and reinforcing that for, for many, many years, our hospital has contributed to the richness of our downtown core. But that may be possible to do that from a number of different locations in the city, so.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Raymond. I'll read the motion. I have a motion moved by Counsel Raymond, seconded by Counsel Sepola. That this committee recommends to counsel that staff be directed to prepare a report with respect to the following: the scope, scale, and cost of commissioning an economic impact study, assessment of Soldiers Memorial Hospital on the City of Auriya and potentially the surrounding area with a focus on the impact of the hospital on businesses located in the downtown core. All those in favor? That's Carrie. Counsel Lauer, you have two inquiries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My two inquiries are a little bit more mundane. The first one, I'm asking for a report on the pumping station down on Davie Drive. Everybody's aware that that is a very low-lying area and this last spring has been very wet and I've had a lot of inquiries, a lot of complaints about, about how that pump is working. So I've thought that the best way to clarify that is just to ask staff to do a brief report on the, the pump, the existing pump, how it works and what might be added or what would, what would it take to improve that service. That's inquiry number one.
If I could, I need a seconder for the motion. Paul.
Wake up.
I'll read the motion. A motion moved by Counsel Lauer, seconded by Counsel Follis. That this committee recommends to counsel that staff be directed to prepare a report with respect to the following: an overview of the operation, efficiency, and reliability of the stormwater pumping station located at Cedar Island Road and Davie Drive, and that the report includes potential solutions to improve the stormwater pumping stations functioning. All those in favor? That's Carrie.
If I couldn't, thank you, Mr. Chair. The second one has to do with some issues that have also come up this year and over the past few years, and it has to do with the Clean and Clear. And apparently, and I may have been the architect of it, I don't know, but there's an appeal process attached to our Clean and Clear bylaw, which is proving to be problematic in, in some cases, because by the time you receive the complaint, by the time you investigate it, by the time you sit through the 14-day appeal process and then take a week to get out of it, and it's taken a month to clear out what could be a health and safety issue. So I've talked to legislative services and they have indicated that, that we are one of the only communities in Ontario that do this and that there was previous to this particular policy, there was an informal complaint process. I mean, if you, if you'd had some legitimate complaint, you could actually talk to legislation and they would, they would listen or if they would, you know, they could deal with it on the, on the fly, whereas this is mandated. So I'm not asking it for it to be changed, but I'm asking that legislative services come back with a report as to the implications of removing that appeal process.
Any discussion? Counselor Sepola.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering why we need a report when I think it's pretty simple. Having talked to the bylaw, or Mr. Crawford, this is really exactly what Counsel Lauer said. It usually would take about 21 days for, to act on an issue, whether it's weeds or whatever, or garbage in the front yard and that. So I'm just wondering, why do we need a report when we could put a motion straight forward and get rid of the, and just bring in the Clean and Clear, get rid of it? Maybe through CIO.
Madam CIO.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would advise that a report is required because council will want to know all the details, perhaps even the history of the appeals that Mr. Crawford has dealt with, so you have all the information before you, before you make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be happy to second Counsel Lauer's request.
Okay. Let's wait for the motion. I'll read the motion. Moved by Counsel Lauer, seconded by Counsel Sepola. That this committee recommends to counsel that staff be directed to prepare a report with respect to the following: the feasibility of amending Chapter 834 of the City of Auriya Municipal Code, Clean and Clear, to remove the appeal process. All those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. I'll now move on to announcements. If there's any announcements from members of council? Counsel Rainsworth.
Yes, through Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind folks that may be watching or in the audience that the Auriya Scottish Festival is this coming weekend. It's going to be phenomenal, definitely something fun that I attend every year, and I encourage folks to not only come out, but encourage your family and friends from abroad to come and visit and check out the wonderful weekend.
Thank you, Counsel Rainsworth. No other announcements? Open public forum? Nobody in the audience coming down to the microphone? Can I please have a motion for adjournment? I'll break Counsel Sepola, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? Thank you.